...to order, Adam, would you call roll call please?
Councilman Brenney.
Here.
Councilman Frederick.
Yes.
Councilman Frohhar.
Yes.
Councilman Hanson.
Here.
Councilman Johnston.
Here.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight and invite you to make comments on the items on the agenda as they appear. And also, item number five this evening is citizens' opportunity to address the council on items not on the agenda. So if there's something other than the agenda items you'd like to speak about, that would be your opportunity. And thank you again for being here. And we will go on to two incentive agenda.
I do have one thing I was going to point out to the group. It had been pointed out that there was a mistake on the minutes. Councilman Johnston abstained on the vote to reappoint the library members. So I would ask that when you make any motion to approve the consent of agenda with the modification of amending the meeting minutes to correct that.
Okay, is there any other discussion on the agenda? Approval of the minutes or receipts of this person's A, B, or C? Any questions or other comments?
I would so move with the question to the minutes getting that Mr. Johnson abstained from the vote on the second and third reading.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Call for a vote.
Councilman Brenney.
Yes.
Councilman Frederick.
Yes.
Councilman Frohhar.
Yes.
Councilman Hanson.
Yes.
Councilman Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you. Item number three is public hearing. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on possible vacation and sale of the east-west alley north of lots one and two of block seven, College Edition in Sack City, Sack County, Iowa. Adam, have you had any written or oral comments about this?
Not for this hearing, no.
I entertain a motion to close.
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing on the possible vacation and sale of the east-west alley north of lots one and two, block seven, College Edition in Sack City.
Second.
I'd like to have an introduction.
No, I'm sorry, we have to vote to close.
What? Okay. Call for a vote.
Councilman Johnston.
Yes.
Councilman Hanson.
Yes.
Councilman Frohhar.
Yes.
Councilman Frederick.
Yes.
Councilman Brenney.
Yes.
Got a hand here. Okay, introduction. Would someone like to introduce? Council member?
I would introduce the reading ordinance number 211-2222.
Entitled?
In ordinance authorizing the sale of the east-west alley adjacent, joining the north half of lots one and two, block seven, College Edition, Sack City.
This ordinance is required by our code in order to sell the property. We do have an interested party that had presented to us that they were interested in the purchase of this property. We did the appropriations checks we do with every one of these opportunities. I discussed it with the different department heads to see if there's any objection based upon utility concerns. There were no objections due to utility concerns. So this ordinance would authorize us to begin the sealed process of selling that property.
Basically vacate it and put up a seal there.
Correct. Which used to, under code, we used to, in some cases, vacate it and simply distribute it to the property owners. However, there was a change to the city code some years ago and requires that we actually sell the property.
Can Jim also add to his amendment to wait the second and third reading?
That would be after, would you?
Yes. So it would be the first and the second.
Correct.
First and the first three. The second.
Is there a second? Call for a vote.
Councilman Brenney.
Yes.
Councilman Frederick.
Yes.
Councilman Frohhar.
Yes.
Councilman Hanson.
Yes.
Councilman Johnston.
Yes.
Now would be the proper time if you wish to waive.
Make a motion to waive the ordinance for the second and third reading.
Is there a second? Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to waive the second and third reading. Would you call for a vote?
Councilman Brenney.
Yes.
Councilman Frederick.
Yes.
Councilman Frohhar.
Yes.
Councilman Hanson.
Yes.
Councilman Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you. 3B, now is the time and place for a public hearing on possible vacation and sale of the east-west alley lying within block six, Early's Edition in Sack City, Sack County, Iowa. Adam, have you had any written or oral response to this?
Not this particular one.
Where's this one at?
This one is, this one is located basically on the same block with the Eric family up there.
Right to the north of Ryan Eric.
Oh, okay. They actually own their property on both sides of the alleyway.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? I entertain a motion to close.
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing on the possible vacation and sale of the east-west alley lying west, lying within block six, Early's Edition in Sack City.
Is there a second?
Second.
Then motion been made and seconded. Call for a vote, please.
Councilman Johnston.
Yes.
Councilman Hanson.
Yes.
Councilman Frohhar.
Yes.
Councilman Frederick.
Yes.
Councilman Brenney.
Yes.
Okay, now would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
I'll make the introduction of the, of the reading, of the ordinance number 211-223 entitled, an ordinance authorizing the vacation and sale of the east-west alley lying within block six, early, that's, lying within block six, Early's Edition of Sack City, Sack City, Iowa.
Second.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, we have to make notes before.
They, just to let you know, before we move on, same scenario here, we did a review. We didn't find any opposition to this particular sale either. So.
I'll suggest it be sold first.
Okay, it's a first. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a first and a second, and the introduction and first reading ordinance 211-223. Would you call for a vote, please?
Councilman Johnston.
Yes.
Councilman Hanson.
Yes.
Councilman Frohhar.
Yes.
Councilman Frederick.
Yes.
Councilman Brenney.
Yes.
Thank you. Item 3C.
If you wish to waive any of those, this would be the proper time to do so.
So move to waive the second and third readings.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion been made and seconded to waive the second and third reading. Would you call for a vote, please?
Councilman Brenney.
Yes.
Councilman Frederick.
Yes.
Councilman Frohhar.
Yes.
Councilman Hanson.
Yes.
Councilman Johnston.
Yes.
Item number 3C, now is the time and place for public hearing on possible vacation and sale of Dunkum Street, lying east of Seventeenth Street and west of Sixteenth Street, Early's Edition in Sack City, Sack County, Iowa. Adam, have you had any written or oral comments about this?
I have. I received a letter from Mr. Bushman today. He is suggesting he is contesting to this, to the sale in its current form. He would like the city council to consider taking this back in and separating it into two different parcels or pieces of property. The top, right now, the way it's set up is the street, Dunkum Street, we own sixty feet in the middle of what was once an eighty-foot road. And of that sixty-foot, the way it's currently set up is to sell the entire sixty-foot stretch between Sixteenth and Seventeenth Street. What his request is, is that we separate that out into a northern band of thirty feet and a southern band of thirty feet and sell this as two separate pieces of property in the future.
So.
Mr. Bushman.
Would you like to speak?
I would. I've done some research on it, came up for sale. I'm not sure if Adam's correct with his measurements of sixty feet in there. I did some research at the courthouse. It's shown that that was originally an eighty-foot wide street at one time, with ten foot previously being sold to the Millers with a seventy cent, or seventy-foot area in there. With all the plaques and with the documentation, it's still showing seventy feet. The question is, where's that seventy feet at? The other thing I feel to sell that property, if it's sold as one unit, it's going to take my driveway and if it is seventy feet, possibly my garage. So I think more research needs to be done on it. Today I did contact the surveying company. They are, I'm looking at getting a survey done on my property so that I know where my southernmost half is and where this street actually begins. So I think, I'd even like to see, you know, maybe the decision table for a couple of months. It's going to take them approximately a month to get out there and get the survey done. And it would take a couple of weeks after that to be able to get it written up and notarized as such in the courthouse. And I said, you know, it's really unknown as to exactly where that street lies up there. If it is the seventy feet, it's going to push that lot line really close to my house. And if that's the case, I'm going to try and get more of it purchased from the city if at all possible. And I really think that it just, it just needs some more research done off of it from what I've seen, you know, like one of the courthouse.
In making your statement about the seventy, just to clarify a little bit, well, our maps and the auditor's office official plaques in their office will show that ten for C, ten feet was vacated to the, what would be now your property, and ten feet was vacated to what would now be the Miller property, showing that there's sixty feet in the middle. I'd be happy sometime if you and I'd like to go up there, I'd be happy to show you where that's located if you'd like.
That makes me feel a little better. And the other thing is, we've got Mid-Americans got a pole. If you go up and look at the property coming out of my garage, that Mid-American pole is right dead center. And I've asked them if they'd be interested in moving the pole and they're absolutely adamant that they're not going to move the pole. So the way the driveway's currently situated up there, I need to be able to pull to the south to get around the pole and utilize the driveway. So I do have some concerns on the way that it is set up to be sold.
I have heard from Mr. Miller. Mr. Miller was in light last week as well and he confirmed that he was, he also supported this, Mr. Bushman's position.
Hey, counsel, would you like to table this matter?
As of right now, all we need to do is close the public.
Okay. I'd like a motion to close the public hearing. Excuse me, I'm sorry, how are we doing it? So move.
To close the public hearing.
Is there a second to close the public hearing?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Would you call for a vote, please?
Councilman Johnston.
Yes.
Councilman Hanson.
Yes.
Councilman Frohhar.
Yes.
Councilman Frederick.
Yes.
Councilman Brenney.
Yes.
Thank you. Now, would we?
I'll make a motion to be tabled this for two months. It's fine.
Until it's, probably until the research is done on it, whatever time it takes.
Two months. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to table this item for two months. Is there any discussion or questions? Call for a vote.
Councilman Brenney.
Yes.
Councilman Frederick.
Yes.
Councilman Frohhar.
Yes.
Councilman Hanson.
Yes.
Councilman Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, moving on to item four, projects. A, Sack City Housing Rehab Project. Number one is consideration of amending the local planning and administrative agreement with Region 12. And in your packet, I believe it said they would like to amend it to extend it to the end of September.
This just allows, as the bills and the process, and you might remember, we added a project late, this just extends the time period so that they can continue to be under contract for that purpose.
Make a motion to extend the agreement with Region 12 till the end of September.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to amend the local planning and administrative agreement with Region 12. Any questions? Do you call for a vote, please?
Councilman Johnston.
Yes.
Councilman Hanson.
Yes.
Councilman Frohhar.
Yes.
Councilman Frederick.
Yes.
Councilman Brenney.
Yes.
Item number five, is citizens' opportunity to address the council on items not on the If there are none, we will move on to item number six, license and permits. A, renewal Class C liquor license with outdoor service and Sunday sales for Sack Country Club Inc., DPA, Sack Country Club. John, here, is there any?
No, no. I'll move that one.
Motion has been made and seconded to renew the Class C liquor license for the Sack Country Club. Any questions?
Councilman Johnston.
Yes.
Call for a vote.
Councilman Hanson.
Yes.
Councilman Frederick.
Yes.
Councilman Frohhar.
Yes.
Councilman Brenney.
Yes.
Item 6B, consideration of approving Sack County Fair's application for noise pollution permit for the Sack County Fair.
So move to approve the Sack County Fair noise pollution permit.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the Sack County's application for noise pollution. Would you call for a vote?
Councilman Brenney.
Yes.
Councilman Frederick.
Yes.
Councilman Frohhar.
Yes.
Councilman Hanson.
Yes.
Councilman Johnston.
Yes.
Item number seven is miscellaneous. A, consideration of approving Chad Peterson's request to close William Street between North Fifth Street and the north-south alley of block thirteen of original town from August first through the twelfth from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And I believe in your packet, you, he is doing some rough work and you have the space to tear off and so on and so forth.
It wouldn't obstruct the access of any particular business. And of course, the message it was giving to me is, he's not going to have the road shut down that entire period of time. It's when he's working and he's.
I think it's a good idea to save the chance of shingles, windshield, and somebody getting it closed. The arse will be on there, so.
The bank, anybody with a driving bank can go around that way then?
Yeah, they just have to go around the other way. Seventh Street or up.
Hey, are you ready to make a motion?
I'll so move to approve the, ever pressed Chad Peterson to close William Street, North Fifth Street and the north-south alley of block thirteen from August first to the twelfth from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Would you call for a vote?
Councilman Frohhar.
Yes.
Councilman Hanson.
Yes.
Councilman Johnston.
Yes.
Councilman Frederick.
Yes.
Councilman Brenney.
Yes.
7B is opening and review of bids for city equipment and possible award.
For the park truck, I have two bids. For the park truck, I have a bid from Bob Scheffler of $105.95.
What, what's, what is the truck?
This is the park truck. It does not run. It's the old Ford park, park truck. I believe there's a description here. 1992.
1992.
I have a second bid from Don, or Don Hoffer for $310. That is all the bids that I have for that particular piece of equipment. For the fire truck, I have two bids. The first bid is from Don Hoffer and it is for $400 for the fire truck. This is that 1962 Ford fire truck.
It's a new water plant.
Yeah. I have a second bid from Bob Scheffler for $255.95. I have one bid for the mosquito sprayer. It is a bid from Bob Scheffler for $52.95. Do you, would you like to look over the bids?
Adam, did we originally say that we were going to check out, you know?
No, scrapping.
We scrapped it?
Correct.
And we would not accept anything lower than that? Is that correct?
Correct. Delivered, and you have to understand, this is delivered price to Carol. For the two pieces of equipment, the fire truck and for the park truck, we were looking at a rough value of $700 to $800. And that is delivered to Carol. If you take into consideration that the cost associated with transporting it to Carol, I would recommend accepting the highest bid on both the park truck and the fire truck.
What about the mosquito spray?
The one bid we received for the mosquito sprayer was $52.95. We don't, we never anticipated it as being a scrap idol. It's really hard to tell you what an exact value for that piece of equipment would be. It is 16 years old, I believe. We expected that there would be some particular interest from some of the other communities surrounding us, but we did not receive any communication from them.
Does it still work?
The last time we used it was last July and it did work at that time.
But we don't, don't need it, do we, any of them?
No, no. We replaced it, therefore, that's why we were looking at the possibility of selling it.
I'd move accept the highest bid as.
For each one of these?
For each one of these as of otherwise accepted.
Is there?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the highest bids for the commercial mosquito sprayer, the 1962 Ford fire truck, and the 1992 Ford park truck. Would you call for a vote, please?
Councilman Johnston.
Yes.
Councilman Hanson.
Yes.
Councilman Frohhar.
Yes.
Councilman Frederick.
Yes.
Councilman Brenney.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. 7C is consideration of accepting Maybeth Wossen's resignation from the Trees Forever Board. In your packet, you had a copy of her letter asking to be able to not be on that committee anymore. And I believe it's in there, it said something like she served in excess of 15 years and she thought it was time for somebody else to get a chance to serve on that committee. So, I don't know, if you think it's okay or would like to move forward?
I make a motion to approve Maybeth Wossen's resignation from the Trees Forever Board.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, motion's been seconded.
With a thank you for all her years of service.
Right, absolutely. In fact, we should write her a thank you from the city, expressing our appreciation. Motion's been made and seconded to accept Maybeth Wossen's resignation from Trees Forever Board. Call for a vote, please.
Councilman Johnston.
Yes.
Councilman Hanson.
Yes.
Councilman Frohhar.
Yes.
Councilman Frederick.
Yes.
Councilman Brenney.
Yes.
7D is consideration of appointing Will LaFort to the Trees Forever Board.
She made the mistake of moving to town. She said she was willing to accept if she was offered the position.
I'll make a motion to appoint Will LaFort to the Trees Forever.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to appoint Will LaFort to the Trees Forever Board. Would you call for a vote, please?
Councilman Brenney.
Yes.
Councilman Frederick.
Yes.
Councilman Frohhar.
Yes.
Councilman Hanson.
Yes.
Councilman Johnston.
Yes.
Item 7E is consideration of accepting Tammy Vine's resignation from the P&amp;Z zoning commission.
I'll so move to accept Tammy Vine's resignation from the planning and zoning and the stipulation. I will also write her a thank you for years of service. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept Tammy Vine's resignation. Would you call for a vote, please?
Councilman Johnston.
Yes.
Councilman Hanson.
Yes.
Councilman Frohhar.
Yes.
Councilman Frederick.
Yes.
Councilman Brenney.
Yes.
Item 7F is consideration of appointing Tom McGinnity to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'll make a motion, motion to appoint Tom McGinnity to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to appoint Tom McGinnity to the P&amp;Z Commission. Would you call for a vote, please?
Councilman Brenney.
Yes.
Councilman Frederick.
Yes.
Councilman Frohhar.
Yes.
Councilman Hanson.
Yes.
Councilman Johnston.
Yes.
7G, discussion of chapter 149, Property Maintenance Code.
A copy of the Property Maintenance Code, chapter 149 of the city code is in your hands. I believe it might have been in your packet the last time. In particular, one of the things that we were asked about is our enforcement of this code. I did talk a little bit with John about the use of this code and how this code has been used in the past. Particularly, it is our main structural active code for weeds, grass on properties. It is also the active code, for instance, when an individual does not take care of snow on the walkways on their particular piece of property. It's also the code, for instance, when people don't trim their trees that hang over the sidewalks or the alleys or streets as well. It's enforceable for that purpose as well. It does have some enforcement parameters that have been used in the past for infestation Those are the main uses in the past for this code. It also has stipulations in here for the purposes of dead or dying trees that may be a concern inside of the property. It also has provisions within it for the purposes of general maintenance of the property itself, including fences as well as a portion of that, and proper steps and walkways as well. It is also an enforcement, within its enforcement powers, our animal waste left in the, on the grounds, particularly in the right-of-way and the walkway locations as well. John, did you want to make any other comments about whether it's enforced, how it's enforced, anything of that nature?
No, I mean, we, you know, it's pretty much a complaint based, you know, or for some of it. A lot of it, we do drive around and, you know, I know the house thing is one of them. That's one we have not, have been paying on houses, not enforced in the past due to not receiving any complaints.
What's the action? Is it a fine or is it?
It'll start out with a seven-day notice to abate. And if that's not taken, then it's usually sent to the court system and there, they're usually given 30 days to clean it. And I've seen before, whether it's not done then, then they give them more days. I've not seen too many fines from the court.
Is the courts.
Court, yeah. You can enforce it all you want. What?
Yeah.
So like, say, I don't scoop the snow up my lawn. You gave me seven days, you do it. You could issue me a fine, I can go.
Well, and like, say, snow and tall grass, a lot of that people do is too, is we have the city just do it, and it gets put on your taxes. And that's something we do a lot, especially with the grass, tall grass, and there's some sidewalks, but tall grass is a lot. You know, we got all these people from out of town, California, buying all these houses, you know, they don't maintain or mow the grass, or, so we have Tom go up and mow them, and they guess that's his hourly rate to their house assets.
This code has some overlapping capabilities with other codes within our ordinance set. For instance, this one does discuss trash and debris on the property, however, we also have junk and junk vehicles code that kind of overlaps a little bit with the enforcement of this one. Most of the overlapping enforcement apparatus of this code is with planning and zoning, which would be found under Chapter 145. You might remember, there was an issue about a year, year and a half ago, and we had some hearings, particularly pertaining to some properties and whether or not their status had abandoned. In that particular case, typically, one of the other areas of that 145 would either be the proper enforcement in some of those cases, or possibly Chapter 149, depending on the degree, of course. Typically, this one is considered a lesser degree enforcement than the P&amp;Z codes. By the time it meets the P&amp;Z codes, it's usually a health and safety matter at that point.
I did ask John to give me a list of the houses that he felt needed some addressing of issues such as peeling paint, shingles missing, holes in the roof, things like that. I have a list of 22, and I did talk to Carol Brown. She is the president of the board for Partners for Progress, and we'd like an opportunity to visit with these people and find out, you know, is there something we can do to help you? If we get, can, for instance, if they need new paint, if we can get people to help volunteer, can you buy the paint? See if we can't work through it that way, whether, if they don't have the money, what good does it do to find them? So, we're going to try and work on this in a different manner. Curtis?
The public record that's sitting in front of you with the list of properties and what's wrong with them, could you read them for the benefit of the public, please?
Well, there's no names on it.
That's fine. Just the addresses and what's wrong with them.
We can give you a copy of it, it's kind of, it's a whole list.
So you don't want to read them in public?
Well, I mean, giving you a copy and reading them, how's that any different? I mean, you want to have the time to read through them?
1202 Lozier, paint peeling. 306 South 13th Street, shingles missing. 402 South 10th, paint peeling. 408 South 10th, paint peeling. 510 Flat Street, hole in garage, paint. 302 South 6th, paint peeling. 307 South 7th, paint peeling. 311 Leonard, paint peeling. 300 Leonard, paint peeling. I think, I'm going to stop right now because I think it's unfortunate that I read this before I have an opportunity to talk to these people. And that was my whole thing on this, I was going to visit with them in person and see how we can help them. Curtis?
Are you going to routinely send someone around town looking for stuff that's wrong with houses?
No. This was just, people were asking about what we, how we could handle this, because there are some that really need attention, so...
Could you tell me whose idea it was to send someone around town looking for problems with houses?
Yes.
Where the idea originated?
Yes, that was the idea, to see if we, not to find them, not to charge them, but to see if there was some way, if they wanted our help, that we could help them in some way.
Could you tell me who initiated that action? Name of the person?
Yes, I did.
So you're only going to read half the list?
Pardon me?
You're only going to read half the list, then?
No, I'm going to go ahead and read the rest of it.
Awesome.
But I think it's, I mean, I think it's out of order to do it this way, because I believe it would have been better had I visited with these people first and said, is there any way we can help you? And that was the idea of this whole thing. 607 Leonard, paint peeling. 207 South 3rd, garage, hole in the garage roof. 108 North 3rd, excessive paint peeling. 909 Phillips, excessive paint peeling. 1400 Hobbs, excessive paint peeling. 405 North 11th, excessive paint peeling. 915, excessive paint peeling. 913, excessive paint peeling. 1000 Main, excessive paint peeling. 1100 Main, excessive paint peeling. 211 South State Street, excessive paint peeling. 110 South 14th, excessive paint peeling. And 1219 Audubon, excessive paint peeling.
Now, I would also probably like to add here, without jumping into anything here that's probably not a complete list.
No, it's not a complete list. It was just, she asked me to make a quick, quick list, I mean, a quick whip around town one day, and just jotted some down, just to give her an idea that that is not a full list. That was just to give an idea if there was some need for Barb to have some people go around and see if they could fix up these places.
Right. The whole idea of the thing was to try to be a partner with these people, if they needed a partner, to get their place painted, to help them get back on track.
There was no talk of charges or anything with this. This was just...
And if they, in fact, if they couldn't afford the paint, we thought maybe we could get some kind of a grant, or work with a paint company, or do something in order to help them give back, get their home back in good order. That was the whole idea.
I heard a comment today, and I don't know the whole story behind it, but I understood maybe at one time that Chamber had something similar to a paint program for people.
I don't, I don't have any information on that.
Somebody just mentioned it to me today.
I think that was several years ago.
I don't have any knowledge of that, but I know that Partners for Progress was very open to be a helping hand, if they could. And if the people don't want to do it, we're not going to force it on them. It's just an act, supposed to be an act of kindness in order to help them and help our town. Okay? Any other questions?
No, I, I think it's a wise idea of ours, and, you know, see if we can get, you know, get them on board, see what we can do to help, you know, and see if we can get some of these properties, you know, kind of, bring it up.
That's one thing I haven't been thinking about doing is talking, you know, they have the yard of the month. It'd be nice if we had the men's club that maybe sponsored a block for an area of the month.
That's true.
Because there are some neighborhoods that, I don't know, my neighborhood, if you get one band line, you're towed.
Okay, do we have more discussion on G? Discussion of Chapter 149, Property Maintenance Code. Do you have any other questions or discussion?
You're going to get back to us here?
Sure, I'll report back to you. My idea was that I was going to start down this line and actually go visit with these people on a personal basis to see...
I think that's a good idea.
What they felt, maybe they don't think their house needs paint, and if they don't, they're certainly not going to force it.
And that could be too. That was just, that was my opinion.
Right.
Driving around, I was not saying that it was against the code, you know, just, just a quick drive.
We know that there's a lot of single elderly people living in some of these homes that either don't have the resource or don't know who to get, or, we just thought that we could be a helping hand if they wanted it. So by no means are we going to force anything on to any of these people that I listed. Okay? Any further, just Curtis?
Do you have a date on which you anticipate being done with your personal visits?
No, I don't. I have another job that I have to do, but I will go when I can and talk to these people, and hopefully it'll be with, while the weather's still nice outside, so we can get a plan going. Okay, H, are we done with G?
Yeah.
Okay, then let's move on to seven H, update on selection of an engineering firm for the street improvement project. Adam?
Colin has had some pretty major modifications that he's requested to the framework of the agreements in place. As soon as those have been reviewed by Keel Empire and a new draft is made up, I will share it with the Street and Alley Committee, so that they can take a look at the new view. Most of the details that are being worked out now are on warranty matters, on inspection matters, things of those nature. Little bit of legal aid is being worked out as well. As far as the main points of the proposed agreement that's been somewhat organized, those are not, must be changed or organized.
Any other discussion on that one? Then we'll move on to seven I, opening and review of bids for electrical services for North Fifth Street, project and possible award.
I have received no bids for the electrical work on this. I have received some interest from some local vendors, but have not received any bids. At this time, my position is, is to go back in and review what our options are, and look if we might be able to deal with this in alternative circumstances. I may talk to some of the locals and see if I can get estimates from them to make a determination on if, in fact, this is going to be the threshold for bidding process, and see if we, see if we have alternative options on how to deal with this, whether we can get estimates in a tip to make agreements in that manner, or whether we need to go out and rebid it. As soon as I have those estimates in my hand and kind of have a path for the council to take, I will bring this back to the council, so you're aware of what the next step will be.
Okay, then we'll move on to seven J, opening and review of bids for construction services for North Fifth Street and possible award.
Same message here as well.
Okay. K, committee and department head reports. Do you have any question or discussion over those, or...
Kidborough Committee, I'm not my attendance at the last meeting, and they had the night out, and they raised, I think, seventeen, eighteen hundred dollars for that deal. Small crowd, but good meals provided and good bidders, I guess.
And lots of good door prices.
And lots of the community stepped forward, and I visit four or five different people in town, and they all give something about any question.
The community rec center has a personal trainer. They do not, they did not hire her, but she has made herself available to the people there. It is her own business, it is no way connected, but it enhances the center because there is a personal trainer available, and she is skilled in many things, including diet and body mass and exercise and agility, so it's for every single age, and there was a meeting one day, and there was quite a bit of interest. And she will also do classes if there's five people that want to do water aerobics or want to do land aerobics or whatever, so. And they're moving forward on the pickleball tournaments for the fall. It's too hot right now, but the equipment is in, and they are moving forward on getting that organized. And like I said before, they're going to have themed birthday parties for kids, and so there's going to be quite a few new programs coming up.
Can you explain what pickleball is?
It's kind of like ping pong, where it's got bigger paddles, and it's a bigger ball, and they use a net and the floor, and there's a lot of stuff about it online, and then, I guess in many places they have leagues, and it's supposed to be really a lot of fun. Okay? Anybody else?
I do have, I received a notice from Region 12. There was a copy of the email, I believe, in your packets. There is a Citizens Advisory Commission for Public Input for the Department of Transportation. It is, the closest meeting to us is in Storm Lake on August 31st, and that's from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Anderson Auditorium at the Grand Vista University. If any of you are interested in that, I do let me know. Like I said, there's a communication in your packet that kind of explains a little bit what they will be talking about, so if you're interested, please let me know. Second thing I have is, is that this week I was presented, or I guess I should say last week, I was presented with a report from the airport. It's the aviation system plan in individual airport for 2010 to 2030 for our airport, and an executive summary for the system all up for the state of Iowa. You're welcome anytime you'd like to come out of the office and take a look at these. I do have these, I only have one copy tonight, but if you're interested in looking through it, I do have it available for you.
So, yeah.
Question for Bob on his, maybe it's too late. How was my skid, has he had much?
I think we're pretty well in control again. I think I had in there five times.
Yeah, yeah, four times.
Four times? Well, it's great once since then, so that's five. Ready to go tonight, I think, being just a fair week, we give them a good go tonight. Maybe Wednesday morning before things get started over there sprayed area, and kind of wait and see how they develop, whether they come back, or however, however they respond.
Just for some people to ask me, what's it cost, on average, for us to spray?
A thousand?
When do you spray?
A thousand dollars.
Thousand dollars. Material on time?
That's including my time.
I do have one or two just notifications with the council. It was in your council forum discussion items, but just to let you know that the fire department received a RINZI grant that is paying for 50% of a grain den rescue system. And the other part, it looks like all but maybe about $400 of it's going to be donated by individual contributors, and about 400 was actually, probably ended up coming from the fire boards that match. The Chamber Main Street also received a RINZI grant for $5,500 to assist in the paying for the North Fifth Street project as well. The only other thing to let you know about is that Shirley didn't contact me and wanted to make sure that we were aware and invited. There will be a representative from Senator Harkins' office at the, at the Chamber SETD office on August 9th at 2:00 p.m., and he will be discussing economic development in our region.
Is there anything else? Hannah or Taylor?
Move to John.
Is there a second?
Six.
Motion's been made and seconded to a jury. Call for a vote.
Councillman Johnston.
Yes.
Councillman Hanson. Councillman Frohhar.
Yes.
Councillman Frederick.
Yes.
Councillman Burney.
Yes.
Thanks, everybody.